Wasi, we call it Hakuma, we thought that they were in the zone here, we call it Olympic. What good Panyo, fight for the best, he definitely fight medium. We are taking a picture. One day, so cool, football final. He need to, we call it Yaya Chao, she did, call it low and pain me down. The what, he died, he died here, he won't be here. Now look up Ben, he had a day, he gave me cake. So, he had a year. Now let's agree, the Ben, we will accept her, for the more in move for Olympic. For the being, the Zaza Jorot. Who, now the road Jor, I can't go near it. Now no, we go to Nonto, okay Yaya, then we will take you to the pin. We will call you, it's a bad day, Sabah. One Jor, Zaza Road, fight for, fight for real, you better be a part of. You will create a new football. Now look, Ben, but she can defeat the governor Yarbay. The director, can national security level, not a problem there, we will be Ben. They was here, they go to, logo, center Panyo. We call it, a technical committee in Olympic. Uh, mid way, Panyo, I should be here, they then, Rara Baye Baye. We will like it, I can't ruin it. Now you know, the kitchen road, of a pin. For American, how we call it Hakuma, we are a children. But Ben did, he is cruel, he is why. But then go, then technical committee in Olympic, he is why can. He will take away, he can take away this. And we will show American, so, but you, deputy governor, you right, we will do. That's the one that came, we want to work that. Because I'm here, then I put Panyo, too. Uh, was in Jor Olympic, I did training, I have a ping, he is the road. They call it, they will take a train, they call it call Payamarko. When I did call take a train, you need to. Okay, when I see train, I keep, what train you have been, you Jor, you the train. Now I do one call, he, chat, chat there, chat there, we will get knowledge, skills, we want to take a year. I did to me, then, I did, she go, now you know, Jor thing, the thing, like it. Kawa, take a lot of records, I think, I didn't talk to me, like it, the Ben, you know. He there, for party, you know, he, but you, eh, yeah, today, you don't want to go to, he take a, he had, we will see you. Then he get here, uh, dinner on the street, take the, come here, too, we, we. Oh, Ben, she like that, me take, after, me, yeah, quite the whole can eat. You know, we get, but me, by the, then, they get a watch, don't I put it on me. For like it, he take it away, he eat. Right, oh, I can, I should, we will be on Ben's way. At all, all over the world, football, he there can max, for the points. He can get there, right, then, international standard, right, then, football, he there can. He can, he can, we will ping, then you know, that one, I call it, he get in. Now he, he there, playing, he take, we eat, it again. Badat, we share editor, then Ben, then, I can choose why you go, you go, Ben. I go there, you get, you like it, tell you, you know, but then, but then, you know. Then, and we channel, we, we, oh, we are going, we are there, for American, I can, I know.
We have four tables, for Panyo Payam. We have point, and again also, we have Panyo Payam here, we have point, because the can it go down here. Uh, book Jor football for men, uh, is three point. Uh, we have Taka Gur, is ten point. Uh, we got a volleyball, for men, uh, two point. We got a volleyball for girls, uh, for, and for girls, three point. Uh, football youngsters, nil, which is zero. We have javelin, for boys, two point. We have javelin for girls, nil. We have short push for men, four point. And then we have short push for girls, which is nil. Uh, we have discuss, for men, four point. We have discuss, for girls, one point. We have long jump, men, one point. We have long jump for girls, nil. Uh, one hundred meters, boys, uh, two point. One hundred meters, girls, one point. Uh, and then two hundred meters, boys, one point. Uh, two hundred. Two hundred meters for girls, one point.
No, zero.
Zero, uh, zero point. Uh, we have four hundred for boys, nil. Four hundred meters, girls, nil, and eight hundred meters, uh, eight point. Uh, we have one thousand five hundred meters, men, fifteen point. And then, uh, one hundred by four, men, sixteen point. Uh, one hundred by four, girls, uh, four point. Four hundred by four, men, nil. Uh, four hundred by four, girls, nil. So, now, we, we have to work for general calculation, to see the, the, the general total. So, when you add, three plus, ten, thirteen, plus two, fifteen, plus three, eighteen. Plus two, twenty, plus four, twenty-four, plus four, plus one, plus one, plus two. Plus one, plus one, plus eight, plus fifteen. Fifty-seven, plus sixteen.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, plus four. Uh, I will convince, it is seventy-seven point, then raise the mark of first. Uh, so can that seven, seven.
Uh, can the chap team, you can find out. John, before you move ahead, we need to clarify, the discuss, can you use the one point, you know, come? Yeah, I know one. Discuss, discuss.
Discuss.
Discuss, for girls. You think this, uh, you, you can come up with. Have you give me one minute? I just want to play something. Do you only, can, I tell you, can you, can you, when they are complaining more?
It is no complaint, but I will rush there, there, you, you, you.
Discuss, long jump, uh, for, uh, for the, you know. Uh, I would tell you, if you doubt, you can, where are your, or answer, given, discuss, girl, uh, Rani, number one. Uh, for in Rani, you think, Rani, one.
And then objection.
Uh, in a rap, you know, you will come, can you to book, uh, take a book, yeah, Ben, by then, did you all come, when I hear? Then we will come, we start one by one. Uh, I know, I know, call it, why, you tell, you're on, you're on, all of us, you all, you. For Yala, you did future, you fast through the classroom. And in classroom, as a teacher, we have a professional advocate to follow. Uh, you're on, 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 you're on.